I call this meeting of the Duncanville Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We will now move into the opening ceremonies, and I ask Joe Vera Cruz to lead us in the invocation.
Please stand. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again, we ask you and thank you, Lord, for another day that wasn't promised. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to come forth as a just great stewards of all the resources you've given us, Lord. As we consider this budget, Lord, let us always consider that you, Lord, provide for us, and we appreciate everything the Holy Spirit has given us in grace and favor. In addition to that, Lord, I'd like to pray for my brother who suffered motorcycle accident this past weekend, Lord, that you would help protect my family, Lord, put a head to protecting us upon them, keep us safe, Lord, and always entrusting in you and your mighty name, my pray. Amen.
Okay. We will now recite the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I'll now turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith for opening comments.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, board members and staff, those that are in the audience. The first order of business today will be to conduct a public hearing to allow public participation in discussion of the proposed tax rate for the 2018-2019 school year. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Bigby to come and make that presentation. Do we have any, Ms. Richards, we don't have any speakers? Anyone want to sign up? Okay, thank you. And by the way, board members, we have this information in your board book so that you can follow along.
Board members, while they're loading that up, there's a one slide that's in your book that's not in the presentation, that's on page five. It's the Notice of Public Meeting to Discuss the Proposed Tax Rate. As you know, by law, these have to be posted in the paper between 10 and 30 days before the actual hearing and the setting of the tax rate. This was posted within those legal framework. Just to go through this form right quick, most of it comes from the Dallas County Appraisal District, so it's a matter of us bringing numbers forward that they brought to us. There's a box just down that says Maintenance Tax, School Debt, Service Tax. This is the piece that basically makes this a tax rate that would require a tax ratification election. If you notice, the proposed maintenance tax rate's a dollar seventeen. Anything over a dollar four automatically triggers a tax ratification election or a tax swap, as we're calling it. You'll also notice that the debt tax rates lowered by the thirteen cents, that the maintenance tax rate was raised, so there's just a wash as far as what the taxpayer will see as far as the tax rate. The middle section are values that come from the appraisal district. They're not the final ones. Those of us that have a July one fiscal year have to adopt off of the preliminaries since they don't give us the final tax roll until July 25th. The rest of it just matches up numbers that are calculated, the middle part, as far as rollback rates. The section that says comparison proposed levy, I took the values that were on last year's, and then I had to project the average value of a home into this year, since we don't have that information yet. I took the nine and a half percent that we're working off of and just applied that to the average value. You'll see that a person owning an average home, their tax bill will go up $132. That has zero to do with what the tax rate we're asking you to approve and all to do with the value increase of their homes. Any question on this form? I know it can be confusing. Just want to make sure everybody at least understands as well as I do, and that's not always the best. We'll move ahead then. This is showing the tax rate that you adopted last year at a dollar four. The interest in sinking, or what we pay debt with, was forty-eight, one forty-eight. The proposed tax rate that we're proposing to you now is a dollar seventeen for M&amp;O, and we've actually dropped the one-four-eight off of the tax rate. It's a very small decrease, but we brought it down to a whole number of thirty-five cents. We went from one fifty-two, one forty-eight, to one fifty-two even. And as I said earlier, anything above a dollar four for maintenance and operation automatically triggers a tax ratification election, so that's why after you set the tax rate today, if you so choose to do that, then you'll also have to approve an order calling a tax ratification election. Want to make sure everyone was aware that we have not increased the tax rate. Taxes generated, this is simply just math. If you notice, at the old tax rate, minus the one forty-eight, we'd generate sixty-seven million dollars worth of taxes. At the new tax rate, we'd generate exactly the same amount of taxes. This is just a comparison to show once again that you, as a board, won't be setting a tax rate that's any higher or collect any more money than what you would at the old tax rate. Debt schedule, I know there's been a little concern, if we lower the INS tax rate, how do we pay the debt? Our debt payment for this year's almost nineteen million dollars. If we take the thirty-five cents that's now in INS, then it generates fifteen and a half million dollars. If you subtract that from the eighteen-eight, it leaves three million, three ninety-one, and we'll pay that out of the additional maintenance and operation that comes from the taxes there. And this is in addition to the five point two million. Actually, it generates about nine million dollars, but in order to pay our debt schedule, we'll have to pay this much out of maintenance and operation. So the result is we pay our debt just as it's scheduled and still with the TRE, be able to pick up an extra five point two to, actually, that number's probably gone up just a little bit since then, more like a five point eight million. So that's in addition to paying all the debt. Any questions there? I know that can be a little confusing, but we've been dealing with it for a couple of months, and sometimes we scratch our heads. So I just want to make sure you understand, and the public understands, that we're not having to come off of our debt schedule, it'll be paid just as it was, and hopefully pay down some of it as we move forward.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
This is the first time I realized that we would or we could pay some debt from M&amp;O.
Yes.
Have we done that in the past with, before this?
Not that I've seen here, but it's been legal. You can do it.
Okay.
And some people have to.
That might should be explained to the public, too, because I'm thinking, well, how are we going to pay debt? There's got to be a, you know, something to it that we're not being told, but I didn't realize you could pay it from M&amp;O, so.
Yeah, you can go that direction, but you can't go the other direction.
Yeah.
And some districts are capped out at the INS rate. Well, it's not really a cap, but they have to pay some of their debt out of M&amp;O. Fortunately, you've never had to do that here, that your debt hasn't gotten to an extent or your values dropped off to where you couldn't pay it out of INS.
Thank you, thank you.
Once again, it's, please ask any question, because this can confuse almost anyone. Question or comments? And then I have a few slides that are in your book to explain a little bit about where we move from here. So anything on what I've confused you with so far? It is a convoluted system, and the actual revenue side through the state's even more convoluted, so it makes it even more difficult. A couple of slides. Why would you increase the M&amp;O tax rate and lower the INS? This is more of an explanation to any of the public that are here, and that's basically because the state funding's based on your maintenance and operation collections, and as those go up, so does your state funding. So together with the property value increase and the additional state funding, we'll pick up somewhere between five and six million dollars more money that'll actually be in the maintenance and operations side. And we're calling it a penny swap, but that's because the thirteen cents go into the maintenance and operation, and thirteen cents go from interest and sinking. Tax rate stays the same. I think we've probably kicked this around pretty good, but what it is, is once you set the maintenance and operation tax rate above a dollar four, or if your total tax rate exceeds the effective tax rate or the rollback tax rate, then you have to have a tax ratification election. Basically, what it says is if they approve the tax rate that you've set, then it goes into effect. If the voters don't approve it, then we actually roll back to the initial tax rate that was set. So either way, the tax rate's going to stay the same, it's a matter of whether the pennies get swapped or not. And why would you slightly lower your tax rate and have to call a TRE? Once again, it's because the maintenance and operations tax rate's above a dollar four. I'll try to make this a little less confusing than it is. The top section is last year's taxes. We get four glimpses at tax rates from the appraisal district. The preliminary comes on April 25th, and you can see what the taxable value was there. We get another one on May 15th. We get another on June the 1st, which we just received, and then on July 25th, we get certified values. What we try to do, since we have the July one fiscal year, is guess at what those certified values are going to be. So we go back and look historically, how has that number changed from the June, or the April 25th number to the July 25th? And the top one, you can see that there was very little change between April and May. There was a little more change between May and June, and there was considerable change between June and July 25th. This coming from the appeals that have gone before the appraisal review board, taxing amounts have changed, and then the certified values come out. So we mirrored that with our projection of what we're going to have for this year. You can see that we dropped it three tenths of a percent between May 14th and June 1, and then we dropped it three percent, which was the same thing that happened last year to arrive at a speculated certified value. It drops three point three percent from the certified value back to May 14th, and that leaves us actually a ten point three percent increase. We've done the budget out of nine point five in case this does go a little further, or there's more of a reduction. I understand there's quite a few more appeals this year than there have been in the past, and they've set up extra time to do that. So to be conservative, and so that at the end of next year, you're surprised happy instead of surprised bad, we've only budgeted with nine point five percent increase. Any questions on that? It's just purely based on historical data. And that's the end of the presentation for the public hearing. I don't know that there's anyone here that would like to speak, but.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have anyone from the community that has any questions.
Okay.
That being the case, then that includes the public hearing part. And so the next.
If there are no comments, we will now move to the action agenda. The first item is a resolution adopting the 2018-2019 tax rate presented by Dr. Bigby.
On page sixteen of your book, there's a resolution that you approve every year when you set a tax rate. This one actually has an added paragraph. If you look down toward the bottom in bold italics, what it says here is if the voters don't approve this tax rate, then they'll be approving the old tax rate. There's some speculation of whether you need this in the resolution or whether you don't, but we felt like it was safer to include it so that anyone sees this and they know that the rollback tax rate will go back to the old rate, which is what the law says anyway. But just for clarity, we put it in your notice, so we'd ask you to approve the resolution setting the tax rates at a dollar seventeen and thirty-five cents.
We have a question.
No, I was going to make a.
Oh, sorry.
Madam President.
Go right ahead.
I'm going to approve the resolution adopting the 2018-2019 tax rate.
There's been a motion by Carla and a second by Phil to adopt the resolution as presented. Next. Are there any questions? Oh, thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six oh.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the action agenda, item B, adoption of an order calling a tax ratification election, TRE, on September 8, 2018, presented by Dr. Bigby.
I'm going to hand this over to our bond attorney, who's Chris Settle, who's here with us. He's with McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton, and he's going to walk you through this order, since it's a little more involved than a typical election order.
Good afternoon. So yes, this order, as Dr. Bigby explained, the district needs to call the TRE because it's setting a tax rate higher than the rollback rate. And basically, this order is, you're calling the election, setting a date, and approving a contract with Dallas County Elections Department to administer the election on behalf of the district. That's really the gist of what this election, TRE election order is doing. So if you, I don't know if you have any questions about that? Yes.
How much does it cost the district?
It's a little over twenty thousand to do the board election, so it's going to be somewhere in that neighborhood.
But we save that because.
We didn't have any board elections this year.
Yeah, you have to pay for the typical publication and expenses and typical election expenses.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of an order calling a tax ratification election, TRE, on September 8, 2018? Renee?
I move to order calling for a tax ratification election on September the 8, 2018.
Board member Renee McNeely moved, and board member Joe Vera Cruz seconded to approve. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes six oh. We now move to the information discussion agenda items. I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith.
All right, thank you, Madam President. So we are going to be presenting the proposed budget and the compensation plan here during the information items. Want to kind of share some goals and thought processes as we go into the information that we're about to share. The first thing that we want to accomplish this evening, or this afternoon, rather, is want to present the most recent, up-to-date information that's relevant for the 2018-19 budget. And then we want to share as much detail as the board would like as it relates to the budget and the budget process. And our goal is to assist the board in understanding some of the financial challenges that lie ahead for us and for all school districts, actually, across the state of Texas. We also want to update you regarding our compensation plan. Ms. Kathleen Brown will be speaking to that for me. And then we want to prepare the board for the final budget adoption, which is on the 22nd, at our 22nd board meeting, so that we can be consistent with starting our July 1st fiscal year. Want to kind of get you acclimated with the material that you have before you. You do have the compensation plan, you have a copy of the compensation plan there in front of you. It'll also be displayed here on the PowerPoint on your screens in front of you as we go through the presentation. You have the presentation on the budget, which is in your board book, and so once Dr. Bigby gets up, you can kind of follow along and walk through and take notes there, ask any questions that you need clarity on. We have a hard copy for you of the financial advisors' report. Mr. McGlaughlin will be up here in a little bit to review that information. Your hard copy looks like this, and so you have that in front of you there. Yes, it's in your green folder. And then you have a hard copy in that same green folder of some articles that I'm going to be referring to in a little bit. Some of these articles you may have read in the paper, just to kind of give you a glimpse of what's going on across the state. Wanted you to at least have the source from which I have pulled the information from. And then finally, you have a hard copy of the actual budget. It's in this green binder. You've got that, so you've got all that information before you, some of it's in your green folder, and some of it's in your board book. So want to just kind of get you acclimated with what you have in front of you. Any questions, everybody? You good?
I'm good, I'm just trying to.
Okay.
I fell on trust, too.
All right.
Page like 24.
Very good.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and get started here, just to kind of have some articles that I put in the paper for you, in your packet for you, and it just is, the whole idea is to give you a glimpse of what's going on across the state of Texas. Obviously, everything that we're presenting today is specific to Duncanville ISD, but there really is a state impact that's happening at state level that's going to impact all districts in the state of Texas. And so I wanted to help frame for you, help you to understand the bigger picture and what we're dealing with. So I provided some quotes from some of the articles. Again, I've given you the articles where I referenced these quotes, just so that you can have the source. But this first article here is from San Antonio Newspaper, and the highlight headline of the article is "Multiple School Districts Face Budget Shortfalls Next School Year." And one of the major quotes is that "budget shortfalls are a direct result of the legislature not adequately funding public education." So again, helping you to kind of see what's going on across the state. On the next slide there, the headline reads, this is from Plano, this is one of the Plano Community Impact Newspaper, they're local papers, this is a board member that's being quoted here. The headline of the paper reads "Millions at Stake for Plano ISD as State Task Force Debates the Funding Formula." And the quote from the board member, "It's clear that school finance is broken, it's incredibly complicated, it's not focused on outcomes and goals as it is on just what amount of money is available every two years and how it will be allocated to rich and poor school districts." On the next slide, the headline, this is from the Texas Tribune, this is March of 2018. It reads, "Will Texas School Finance Panel Tell Schools to Do More With Less? Some Members Think It's Predetermined." And a main quote from that article, "A state panel responsible for proposing improvements to Texas and battle public school finance system is facing criticism from its own members, who say that the panel's hearings seem geared toward a predetermined outcome of making schools do more with their current funding." So it really continues to stress that theme of putting us in a situation where we have to do more with less. The next is from also a publication of the Texas Tribune, it's called Tribe Talk, April of 2018. The headline reads, "It's Time for Texans to Focus on School Finance." And the main quote, "Many of the state's funding formulas for public schools do not account for population growth, they don't account for demographic changes, economic trends, and increased expectations for student outcomes. The state does not allot enough basic funding per student, especially those who require special or bilingual education." And so kind of finally, to kind of wrap it up and give you a perspective of what's going on across the state, last week, I had a meeting with Senator Horace West. Senator West serves on the Education Finance Committee. That's the group that's developing all the different proposals that will impact state funding. And so myself and several superintendents, Dr. Hannah Hoser from Dallas ISD, Susan Ho from Grand Prairie, several other superintendents, Lancaster Superintendent Elijah Granger was there, Cedar Hill, Billy Snow was there, several others were there. But anyway, the whole purpose of that meeting was to talk about state funding and for us to get prepared and to hear straight from the senator, who serves on the committee, what some of the challenges are. These four or five bullets here came out of that conversation, and so basically what he said to us is that the upcoming legislative session is going to be brutal for public education. He talked about Governor Abbott's tax plan to cap property value growth at two and a half percent. You're going to see some information that Dr. Bigby has put together for me. I asked him to put together some scenarios. If this really happened, what would that do for us in Duncanville ISD? We'd be over three million dollars in the red if this proposal happened. And so obviously, to provide quality education and programming and services, it's a challenge to do that when you have policy-driven with this kind of focus. And so things that we've done, like Collegiate Academy and all the support to get that done, our STEAM Academy, we really would have to ratchet back on all of those services that we provide, because there just isn't any funding to be able to make the budget. Also, every session, they've done this, and so it's come up every session, this session is not, coming up will not be new, and that is the effort to expand charter schools. And so any way that they can save dollars from public schools to push to support charter schools, that trend and that movement is going to continue. There's a continuation of decrease in revenue for school districts. We've seen that trend, and we've reported it to you over time. Don't expect that to change at all coming up in this session. Obviously, we've already, many of us have seen the data on the increase in insurance premiums, so we know that's going to happen. And then there's likely going to be more unfunded mandates, as they're always, that's always the case coming out of a session. So as I am preparing to build a budget and trying to think two, three steps ahead to put us in a position of strength and to be able to maintain the quality of service that we all want, these are the factors that I have to consider as we build our budget. And you really have to be focused on the out years versus the here and now. And so a lot of what we're going to be talking about is to really educate you on, in a deeper way, on what our plan is to weather this storm and to provide the quality service that I know we all want for our students. So that just kind of gives you an overview of some of the things that are going on throughout the state as we move into the budget. I want to introduce Josh McGlaughlin. As he comes up, I want to tell you about Josh and his group. Does a great job for us, has been serving the district for several years as our financial advisor. He probably wouldn't want me saying this, but he is an expert, and I mean to put you on the spot there, Josh. But if he can't answer the question, he can definitely find an answer for us. And so as we get into the meat part of our budget, I've asked him to be able to provide the board with some data from our financial team on the debt side, and just also sharing something, some information that he has from the state level as well. So I'll turn it over to Josh.
Well, Dr. Smith, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here today. I promise, the first part of the presentation is going to be a little rough, because I don't have good news, especially when we talk about what's coming out of Austin. The last half, when we start talking about your debt, I do have good news. So with that said, we have some headwinds going into the next session. The first one is Governor Abbott's plan. Property tax revenue cap of. Property tap, or property tax revenue cap of two and a half percent per year. While that doesn't sound overly onerous, it tends to be when it restricts how much revenue the district can receive. It's unclear whether this cap applies to just your maintenance and operation taxes or all taxes. It doesn't spell it out in his current plan. You know, any proposed revenue increase over this two and a half percent cap, because it will allow you to do this per a vote, would require a two-thirds majority to pass. So, typically, under state law right now, you have just a majority vote. You need one more vote, yes than no. This will require a supermajority or two-thirds. Not only by taxpayers, but by elected officials too. The Board of Trustees would have to pass this by two-thirds vote. Even if you go through all this process, you can only use additional revenue for certain items, okay? That'd be compensation for teachers and other instructional personnel, critical infrastructure like classrooms. Again, even with voter approval, um, proposed increases may not exceed the statewide increase in population growth plus inflation. So, here's just another cap on top of the two and a half percent growth. Well, not only do we touch that kind of rev- revenue, we also go over local debt transparency. Changes to the ballots. The ballots where we now require proposed debt service payments associated with a new bond issue, the debt per capita, and, you know, how it will impact your tax rate, whether it will go up a penny, two pennies, whatever. But that will be on the actual ballot now. Again, bond elections would have to be approved by two-thirds majority. That is a very difficult task, but here's the worst one. In order to have a valid election, one-third of your voting public must vote. Let that sink in real quick. We don't even get that at the state level during a presidential election. But that is the kind of restriction Austin is considering putting on local municipalities. Another problem in Austin this year, potential budget gap. Okay? Right now, according to the Texas Taxpayers and Research Association, they believe going into this next session, there's an already a seven point nine billion dollar shortfall in funding. What that generally means is, there's probably gonna be no more additional funding for school districts. And as Dr. Smith alluded to earlier, that probably means you're gonna see several unfunded mandates. So, what that ultimately means is, again, we're shifting the cost of education to the local property taxes, or to taxpayers. If you look, um, back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, local collections comprise roughly about fifty-four percent of all school district funding, or M and L funding. For this past year, it's sixty-one percent. For next year, the forecast is sixty-four percent. Generally speaking, it's putting the emphasis on, uh, local taxpayers to bear the cost of public education. And it's even bigger for chapter forty-one districts, which the district isn't currently chapter forty-one, but they're going to anticipate an increase in their recapture by over five hundred and seventy-two million, just to cover the current formula. Again, um, as you've seen in the last several sessions, charter schools, open enrollment charter schools are a hot topic and a favorite topic for not only the governor, but the lieutenant governor and several members of the senate. As of October two thousand seventeen, there were just under three hundred thousand students enrolled in charter schools. They're anticipating three hundred and thirty-one thousand, um, next year. Again, the way charter schools are funded are basically through revenues provided from the state, which ultimately comes from taxpayer dollars siphoned to the state. House Bill twenty-one, last session, um, guaranteeing sixty million dollars in new charter school funding for facilities. That's going to go into effect beginning next year. And let's not forget, there will be a promotion of school choice. You will start seeing education savings accounts and private school vouchers rear ugly head during the, uh, session list go around. And there's support for this at the federal level. Five twenty-nine plans now will let you take the money out, not just for college, but pay tuition for public, private, or parochial schools. There are several ongoing committees, um, studying potential changes to the school finance system. The most prominent right now is the Texas Commission on Public School Finance. They were charged to develop, uh, recommendations to address several issues, primarily the relationship between state and local funding. Uh, appropriate levels of both maintenance and operations and interest in sinking fund tax effort, um, to stay within the requirements of the constitution, and, um, policy changes to adjust for student demographics and geographic diversity. Now, their report is scheduled to come out in December thirty-first after talking with few of these members. And this is all on their website, and you could go view the meetings and the hearings. But at the end of the day, the bottom line is, don't expect much for this. They'll put some recommendations, but what they really understand right now is their hands are tied due to the lack of funding that will be available. Couple of other commissions, Texas, uh, the Senate Select Committee on Property Tax Reform. Ultimately, they're trying to look at how do you lower property taxes. It's a great goal, um, but at the end of the day, you'll have to replace that revenue with something else. And what they're studying is basically some type of sales tax or consumption tax. So, they're worried about property taxes being too onerous, but now, we're going to go to something that's probably a more regressive tax and the impact on our communities. Senate Education Committee, you know, their primary goal is teacher compensation. You know, look at local, state, and national compensation strategies to try to figure out, you know, what's the best way to, you know, attract, retain, and reward teachers. Again, that's very difficult when there's no money coming from Austin. Now, I know I went through that part of it real quick. That's, that's really the bad part of the presentation. We'll stop there for a second and see if I can answer any questions you might have. Alright, we'll flip over to the good stuff then. Your debt management. Uh, Duncanville ISD is very active in managing its overall debt, not only when it issues bonds, but every year looking at how do we manage our borrowing cost. And it does that through refinancing bonds at a lower interest rate, uh, prepaying bonds prior to final maturity. Look at all the management, uh, techniques. Since two thousand five, the district has saved taxpayers through these techniques over thirty-eight point two million dollars. We have anybody from the paper here? No? Alright, I'm gonna say it again, though, thirty-eight point two million. That is a very large number and you should be very, um, proud of what you've accomplished as a board and as a district. In terms of your last election, uh, the two thousand fourteen election authorized a hundred and two million dollars of bonds. All bonds from that bond program have been sold at this point. It was done in two sales, one back in two thousand fifteen at an interest rate of just over four percent. The most recent one, that last August, uh, at a one point six five percent interest rate. So, on average, just around a four percent rate. Um, at the time of the election, we had assumed a little higher rate. The total bond program was implemented more than twenty-one point seven million dollars below what was communicated during the time of the election. Again, twenty-one point seven million, which resulted in instead of having to go all the way to the fifty cent tax rate that we had told voters, we've been able to come in substantially less. If we look at your debt service profile, this is a chart of your outstanding bond payments by year. Um, as you can see, they're conservatively structured with annual principal and interest payments in each year over the next twenty-eight years. At the end of this year, you'll have roughly two hundred and nine million dollars of debt outstanding. You're very highly rated, double A three by Moody's, double A minus by S and P. And if you look, the very first column is the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. You can see your bond payments were just over twenty million. This year, they're eighteen. Your bond payments do not go up in the future. They actually are coming down next year. What this means to the district, if you look at the blue, that is basically what is required to pay your existing bonds. And the green is really your bond capacity. Anything over, uh, what it costs to pay your existing bonds as capacity to issue new bonds, this assumes a tax rate of forty-eight point one four eight, that is your existing tax rate. But if you look in the two thousand seventeen, or two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, you'll see there's green already, which means at that tax rate, you would generate more money needed than it would to pay your bond payments. As such, you have the opportunity to either lower that tax rate or keep the tax rate the same in prepaid bonds. Or in this case, since you are wisely considering your TRE, you would be able not to have to transfer all thirteen pennies back to your interest and sinking fund to pay bond payments next year. That would leave a little extra money on your M and O side to cover expenses. Again, you're at the point in your debt profile, since there are no future increases and your values are keep going up, that you have the opportunity to manage the debt service tax rate each and every year. That is either, A, lower it to the point where you're making your minimum bond payment requirements, B, maintain your current tax rate in prepaid bonds prior to final maturity, or C, any combination thereof. At the very bottom of that page is your outstanding callable bonds. These are bonds that you can prepay prior to final maturity. Out of the two hundred and nine million that you have outstanding, a hundred and eighty-one of those can be prepaid pri- prior to final maturity. So, well, not only will we look at prepaying those in the future as your values allow, but we will also look at refinancing those at a lower interest rate, should that be available in the future as well. So, from a debt perspective, Duncanville ISD is in a wonderful position. Any questions?
How many of us got it around twenty fifty-seven?
Well, I'm hopeful not to be dup-
I thought that was twenty fifty-seven, I don't know, okay.
And we only show that because under state law, you have forty years.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Josh, we appreciate it.
Good job.
Next order of business continuing is to present to you our compensation plan. I'm gonna call Ms. Kathleen Brown up, uh, to share that information with you.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith. Um, it's my pleasure to present to you this afternoon, um, an update on our compensation plan. Um, and today, we'll be focusing on our teachers and their pay. Alright, so first, um, this year, um, as we've done in the past several years, we participated in a salary study with TASP HR Services. Um, we do this because it keeps us abreast of information on how we compare with other districts. And so, the districts you see listed here are our peer districts. And the way these districts are selected, um, is based on the makeup of their student enrollment, um, as well as their location as it relates to Duncanville ISD. So, as you can see, um, there are districts listed here, Arlington, Cedar Hill, DeSoto, Garland, Grand Prairie, Urban, Lancaster, Mansfield, Mesquite, Midlothian, Red Oak, and Waukesha Hachi. So, for the purposes of, um, information I'll be sharing, it's comparing us to these particular school districts. Okay, and so, when we look at our teacher's salary, um, and compare it to that particular market group, um, you'll see that the light blue line is Duncanville ISD's hiring schedule. And so, that's the information that is posted on our website. And it lists, um, by year, the salary of person with each year of experience with make if they join the Duncanville team. The dark blue or navy blue line is the local market median. And so, it's the median teacher salary, um, related to those districts that are in our market comparison group. And then, that green line is Duncanville ISD actual, um, salaries. So, one line's representing our hiring schedule, and then, the green line is our actual salaries. So, when you're comparing our teacher hiring schedule to our market group, um, our teacher hiring schedule is ninety-eight percent of the market, um, median, and that's through zero to ten years. And so, you'll see where we start at fifty-one thousand dollars, and at ten, we're at fifty-three eight. Um, our hiring schedule at zero years is just one percent below the market. You'll see that, we're at fifty-one thousand dollars, and the market median is fifty-one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Um, and then, if you look all the way to the right, when you look at twenty years, um, our district is one percent above the market. So, the market median is at fifty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars, and you'll see where we, uh, sit at fifty-eight thousand fifty-eight dollars at twenty years. So, although we are not on a step schedule in our district, and what that means is, um, some districts operate by what you see online. If you have zero years, this is what you're gonna get at zero years. At one year, you'll get this amount. At two years, you'll get that amount. Our district is not on a step schedule that moves automatically annual. Our pay over time, um, is very competitive to the market. And the way we get those increases is based on, um, raises that are approved by you, the Board of Trustees. So, if you take a look at that green line, you can see how we compare to the market median with our, our actual salaries. Our actual salaries are trending above the market. Okay? So, our actual salaries are stronger to market across the board, ranging from just one percent below the market with zero years, and we progressed to be four percent above the market at twenty years. This chart shows our actual te- teacher salaries compared to our market group, and that is on, based on our hiring schedule. And so, that red line that you see represents where Duncanville ISD, um, would fall. And then, the blue line on the opposite side shows you where our actual teacher salaries are falling, um, based on those years, five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years. Um, and the last column will show our, show you our average teacher salary, um, related to all teachers in our district. So, um, as you can see, our district is highly competitive at these levels. We rank, um, number two as far as average teacher salary is concerned with our market group, only behind Mansfield ISD. And that's in the last column that you see there. So, of course, we are consistently looking at ways to incentivize our staff with, with pay. Um, but sometimes, um, being on a step schedule in comparison can be kind of confusing. So, I wanna make sure that I answer any questions you have related to that. And when you're thinking of our average teacher salaries, it's, a lot of it is based on our total years of experience for our teachers and nurses in our district. And so, our teachers in our district have on average nine point four years of total experience. That's where we fall currently. Um, the state's average of years is eleven years. So, forty-six percent of our current teachers have less than six years of experience. Um, and approximately, approximately eleven percent of our teachers are new to the teaching field. On last year, we hired a hundred and twenty-nine new teachers. So, they've served our students during the seventeen eighteen school year. Um, and fifty-nine percent of those that we hired in the seventeen eighteen school year were new to the teaching field as well. So, that gives you an update on what our teachers' salaries look like in comparison to the market group. Can I answer any questions for you at this time? No?
Also, wanna just reiterate the compensation plan. Uh, the existing compensation plan is the same, uh, for seventeen, for, the seventeen eighteen plan is the same for eighteen nineteen.
Yes.
So, we're not anticipating any changes in the compensation plan.
Yes. Okay. Alright, that's all, thank you.
And we're coming easy to sixty thousand dollars after twenty years' experience.
Oh, you said to sixty thousand dollars?
I don't know.
Well-
It's just tip, oh, still districts, but you just think with twenty years' experience. It's just typical school districts, but you just think with 20 years' experience, from 50 to 60.
Yes, now, when you look in at, when you look at that, that's just based on our hiring schedule. Our teachers in district who have that years and they've stayed with us, of course, they're much higher. Absolutely. The other, can I share one more thing?
Yes.
That you bring that up, I want you to know, we've talked about in a previous board meeting about the state minimum. And so I typically look at that annually to see what the state minimum is. And so for a minimum of, if you have 20 years of experience, our state minimum is at $45,510 for 20 years. That's the minimum that the state says that you have to pay a teacher with 20 years. And so when you compare us to that, we're well over, we're well over that amount. The minimum that a teacher has to make in the state of Texas is $28,080 a year. That's the state minimum. Yes. So when you compare, we look like we're doing really well. Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm gonna ask Dr. Bigby to come up now and basically present the budget to you. Just want to remind you, the information that Dr. Bigby will be presenting is in your board book. But then you also have this binded document. And that is the 18-19 budget that we're gonna be presenting to you for your approval on the 22nd.
Carl, I will tell you that I came on as a three-month interim, and I may still be here in 2057. It's hard to get away from here. Okay, if you could load up the next one. Once again, please stop me as we go through this, this will be a little lengthy. Josh gave you the good news, and now I've got a long process of giving you the bad. And once again, let's look at how we ended last year, because that's the only firm numbers that we have right now. You can see that we, dollar four was your maintenance and operation tax rate. Beginning fund balance was 40 million, almost 40 and a half. You actually put a little over $4 million into fund balance. So you ended the year at 44 million, or 41.8% of this year's budget, or five and a half months, which, once again, this is review for you. But you ended in good shape, and your fund balance is in very good shape. You can see where the revenues came from last year. You ended the year with, in 16-17, with $108 million. A large portion coming from state, but as Josh mentioned, that's shrinking for our district as well. Debt service, you had a 48, 148 tax rate in 16-17. It began with $11.4 million in fund balance, you put 1.6 million into it. So you ended the year with 70%, or almost $13 million in fund balance, or eight months' worth of bond payments. And that is excellent. You can see that there was $2.2 million came from the state in 16-17. You raised 18 million locally. That 2.2 is disintegrated. Last, this, this year, it's projected at a million that they still haven't paid us. And next year, we're projecting it at about $6,000. So not only have they dropped what is helping on the maintenance and operations side, it's also dropped on the debt service side. Actual fund balances, this is your M and O. We should put some money into fund balance this year, but we don't project that until after the auditors get through with it. So we're projecting it to be flat at the end of this school year. Debt service, we've ended the debt service payments for the year. So we will be putting about $800,000 more into fund balance. Of course, that's unaudited. Auditors have a tendency to move those around. But you will put some, some extra money into the INS fund balance this year. Once again, our funding's based on average daily attendance versus average membership. You can see how those have fared over the last few years, they've both come down. One bright spot, if you'll look, 14-15, there was a 94% attendance rate at the bottom. And it was lower than that the next two years, but this year it's, or 17-18 is gonna end it at right around 94%. So attendance rates come up, and that's a tremendous amount. Every 1% is about $800,000 in state funding. Compensation plan that you put into effect this year, Ms. Brown talked about this, the starting pay you moved from $50,000 to $51,000. Existing teachers got $1,500. And general pay increase of 3% was applied to all employees on the midpoint. And this is very nice. There's not too many districts that give these. If they do, they typically have a TRE to do it with. They don't do it out of the funding system. You moved the contribution to employee healthcare from 245 to 255, which paid for the individual's plan on the high deductible plan of TRS care. It covered all the costs of that. Now we start looking at our projected revenues from last year to this year. You've seen this slide before, it's changed a little bit because of the values. But you can see that 17-18 budget, you projected 106,844. We're projecting 108,073, or a change of $1.2 million, which isn't much to, to do everything that's increasing with. What's in the budget that we're proposing to you? We based it on ADA of 11,919, which is a little bit smaller than what this year's budget was based on. A nine and a half percent increase in taxable values, the dollar four M and O rate. And we built this non-TRE, so the budget's built off of just a non-TRE situation. Dollar four for maintenance and operation, which was no change. Forty-eight for INS, which is just that small change I talked to you about. M and O revenue expenditures, 1.15% higher than last year. Child nutrition revenues, 1.51 less, and expenditures 1.75 less. And those differences came from, last year, you budgeted out of fund balance in the child nutrition budget. And debt service, 5.64% more, and expenditures 2.1 less. And that's totally due to increase in property values. That and the, as Josh showed you, our debt service payments gone down for 18-19. What's also in the budget, adjusted bond payments to reflect all bonds being sold. As Josh said, there's no more outstanding, so those debt rates won't change. Additional staffing at Collegiate, part of your priorities that I've seen was to have these two academies up full running. We added a principal, a counselor, and one teacher in this budget. Additional staffing for the STEAM Academy, we added an academic dean, a counselor, and two CTE, or Career and Technology Education teachers. There's funding to add a police chief and continuance of our present force. Two fifty-five per month for health insurance with this no change. And there's approximately 1147 on the insurance of 62% of our employees, at a cost of about three and a half million dollars annually. Summer school funding adjustment, you'll see some adjustments that look kind of funny. And next year's, this was budgeted at about half of what it costs to run summer school. So we've adjusted that to a correct number. And corrections for underbudgeting Function 21, Instructional Administration, and Function 31, Guidance and Counseling. And I'll explain that when we start looking at the functions. What's not in it? There's no expenditures from any fund balance. Every, all three of the budgets that you adopt, the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Child Nutrition are all balanced. There's no salary increase unless there was an employee that was promoted. There's no increase in stipends that we pay. There's no increase to the district's contribution to health insurance. There's no buses, there's no additional technology for the rotation list. And there's no funding for most of the items that we brought to you or discussed with you from SLT of the 12.5 million. I'll show you in just a moment, some of the personnel were on those requests. So some of that was actually addressed. And there were a lot of maintenance needs. The maintenance budget went up a little bit, but it didn't address anywhere near all the needs that they expressed in here. But some of the personnel, which a little over this two and a half million of this was personnel, some of those have been addressed in this budget. This is what we added to the budget, dollar-wise. If you remember, we had $1.2 million more than we had last year. The personnel for Collegiate and STEAM's about $490,000. Police chief, chief had no impact, because we took it out of the money that we were paying toward Dallas County for our SROs last year. So we've, we've been able, we'll be able to bring him on without changing that budget. There's an athletic office manager and a first assistant coach stipend. The office manager's $40,000, and that stipend's seven. Two athletic trainers, and once ago, these are estimated salaries. $100,000, property insurance, this is one of those that just keeps going up, as you, as you know at home. $100,000 there, maintenance costs, $50,000 increase. To correct the budget for summer school was $250,000. And addition to the technology budget, which didn't even bring it back to the level it was two years ago, $190. So you can see that pretty well spends all the additional revenue. Yes, sir.
First assistant coach is stipend, what is that?
I can let the athletic director explain it to you better than I can, but they needed another assistant coach, I understand, for, for one level.
Because of our increase in our football numbers, from around 170 to over 200, we needed another assistant varsity JV football coach.
So you added a coach only in football?
Yes, sir.
So no other athletic teams needed anybody? So it didn't go up in anything but staff?
Not in dramatic numbers like that. We're an increase to a whole other team, we have two JV teams now because of our numbers.
And this was just the stipend that put him in that assistant coach?
Forty-seven thousand is a stipend?
No, 40,000 was for the office manager, and 7,000 was the stipend. Those are just-
So you're still adding a coach? So if you have 15, you're gonna have 16?
Yes, sir, correct.
So if you're adding a body, you're adding more than 7,000? Is that right?
Yes. What, what happens when a stipend is added? What was approved was the stipend only, so that stipend has to be connected to an existing FTE. So an existing position, because another position was not approved. So through a vacancy that they have at the high school, they'll have to attach that to a teaching vacancy, because only their stipend amount has been approved. Does that make sense?
Slow down, say it again.
Yes, sir. So the vacancies that we have at the high school, the only thought piece that was approved for the football coach was the $7,000 stipend. So there will be another person that will function as a first assistant coach for football, but it won't be an additional FTE or a new teaching position. It will have to be attached to something already existing at the high school.
So there was a position there that wasn't filled?
No, it, it, because of the time of the year we're at, teachers who resign, they can attach it to any vacancy that they currently have. So it could be someone new that they hire on to a vacancy that they have, and that person would get the 7,000 stipend for coaching football.
Could we just pull somebody out of English department? Is that-
You said, "Could we?", basically, basically, it's a teach, it's an existing teaching position.
Somebody that's up there, we just pull them in and add 7,000?
Yes, they don't have to pull someone who's up there. If someone up there is up there is selected, they would add the stipend to them, or someone that they hire for the 18-19.
There'll still be another body out there.
On the field, yes. Or at the games, yes. But not a new position.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to think. With the dual contract, wouldn't, but, okay. This has nothing to do with dual contract, because there's not a vacated position, it's just an additional position.
Whoever took, took on this, let's say an existing teacher becomes this first assistant, they would move to, they would be on a dual contract.
They'd be on a dual-
Absolutely, they would, that's correct.
And what, what numbers do we use to justify that?
What numbers were used to justify the stipend?
Yeah.
The football numbers, right? You can speak to that.
To keep it at what ratio?
To keep it at what ratio?
That's just, that's the stipend that we pay for JV varsity assistant coach.
So my understanding of it is that the football program has increased in the number of students that they-
What ratio, we're trying to keep it between player and coach.
What ratio? Are we keeping between a player and a coach, do you know?
Just, when we increase a team, we, we have to increase the number of coaches. That way they compare the coach for that team when they go out on Thursday night.
Still, what's the ratio between-
We can get the ratio, well-
What's the ratio between coaches and players?
Yes, Coach Harper will get the ratio, and then we'll get that information to you, to Dr. Smith. I can figure it out while I'm sitting there, I'm sure. If you know the number of students. Okay.
Do you like to move on and come back to that?
Guess so, if you don't know the answer, move on.
I don't.
I didn't ask you.
I understand. This is the revenue portion of the budget that we're proposing to you. You can see that it's the same tax rate. You can see the beginning fund balances for each year. In 16-17, there was $2 million budgeted out of fund balance for the budget. We're not budgeting anything out of fund balance this year. So with projecting the end of this year at the same as what you ended last year, the fund balance would be 44.6 million. You can see the revenue difference. The local intermediate last year was 42.6 million, that's gone up to 47.4 purely by the value change. State program, you can see exactly what Josh was talking about. As the revenue from our side increases, the revenue from their side decreases. And federal, there's very little in the general operating. Most of this is the SHARs fund, which is Medicaid reimbursement that we get from the federal government. But you can see that 1.228 million is the same number I showed you earlier that we're increasing in revenue. I know this is small, and I apologize for that, but it's just small. These are the, the budgets, and, and I know some of you have some concerns about the differences in, in some of the functions, and you certainly have a right to be. The first budget that we put out, when, as we were working through this, showed a decrease in the funding in Instruction or Function 11. You'll notice now that's an increase of $230,000, once we got all the things into place. So we didn't decrease Function 11. Function 21 is Instructional Administration, and we're showing it to be $452,000 more than it was last year. One of the problems was last year, it was underbudgeted. We're gonna have to move about $300,000 to end the year on a positive side in that budget. So part of this corrects that. And then after you approved the budget last year, there was $180,000 moved out of that budget. Getting quite figured out where it was moved to, but it was moved out of that budget. So it, it was almost a half a million dollars below. And all this does is, it's the same number of personnel, it just brings it up to, to where it ought to be a definitive budget when we get to the end of the next year. Function 31, I believe, is, is one you might have a question about. Counseling Services is up 198, or 93,000. It's exactly the same as 21, it was underbudgeted last year. I'm assuming it came out of how they rolled payroll into the budget last year. I can't tell you where it really came from, but we're gonna be short in that budget again this year. And hopefully, this will get these more realistically in line with where they should be. Health Services is down 104,000. This is just the opposite, it was overbudgeted this year. We're gonna move, probably have an extra $169,000 in that budget this year. So that's part of where it was underbudgeted, other places it was overbudgeted in this line. People Transportation. Once again, we're gonna have a surplus in that budget at the end of the year. This brings it more in line with where it ought to be. Function 36, which is always a concern, is up $330,000. A big portion of that is the bands eligible for state this year, so we budgeted money to get them to San Antonio and back, which is over $100,000. Additional Personnel is 147,000. Officials, there's a big, a pretty large increase in official pay that's in here. And some equipment increases and it pretty well eats that three hundred thousand dollars up pretty quick. Maintenance, actually I was afraid this would be much higher than this, but that's the plus one eighty-six is just trying to keep up with what we currently do, plus the additional square footage that we've added at Kenmer. There's more cleaning that takes place there, so it naturally goes up. Data processing, we talked earlier about technology, adding money back into the technology budget to try to get it back to where it was two years ago. And once again, that doesn't include the calendar replacements that are out there. And community service, part of this is the TRE election. There's some money in there for the advertising of that. And just bringing them back up to where their budget should be. So even though some of them, and rightfully so, probably look a little strange to you, there's a reason for those. I'd certainly discuss those with you more in depth if you'd like. It's a kind of crazy budget we're working off of this year. I hope that happened before I got here, but part of it's probably mine. But we're just trying to get everything in line so that next year's budget will show you more actuals than what was in last year's. Questions there? Yes, ma'am?
The statements like the one eighty, one hundred eighty thousand moved out, but don't know where it went. And then you don't know where something came from. Was it not balanced or?
Well, I do actually know where it went. It's not, that's probably a misstatement on my part. From the information that I could find from my predecessor, she felt like the budget was three quarters of a million dollars short of covering all the costs. So she took three quarters of a million dollars out of accounts that didn't exist.
Wait a minute, out of, how can you take money out of accounts that don't exist?
They're all negative. They created negatives, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in negative accounts. And moved the money into some of the other functions to possibly cover some shortfalls that she had seen or she felt like she saw. Those negatives are still in there. When we show you the financial report, it figures in those negatives. So even though there's that much negative sitting out there, we still have a positive budget. So I can't find where she felt like those, that three quarters of a million dollars was gonna come up short. But that took place after you had approved the budget last year. And we do know where it went. We can track where it went and that's part of why this budget's a little bit off. Because part of it, she moved into a place where she didn't need to move it. So. I wish I could explain that a little better, but.
That's okay, I'll dream about it and figure it out.
No, he was, he was, you know, without
Okay.
Alluding to some of the challenges, which is the reason we have Dr. Bigby in place now. But Dr. Bigby had to come in and try to understand a budget that he didn't build. And so he can guesstimate, but it's hard to get in the mind of someone to understand why and what the rationale was. So you just have to kind of use your judgment and experience and what limited information you have to kind of put the pieces of a puzzle together. And so when he's saying he didn't know, that's really what he's referring to.
I appreciate that. I know as a trustee, they're not, we're very limited on things that we do, that we can do. I mean, the higher fire superintendent and approval of the budget, so budget, budget, budget.
Sure.
When I just hear things like that, it's, you know?
And it should. As your fiduciary responsibility to understand as much as you can.
Thank you, thank you.
When I ran the budget and looked at it first, the first thing that pops up on the expenditure side is a code sixty-one eleven, which you don't use. And that's where all the negatives were. And I thought, my goodness, I should go home instead of trying to figure out where this went.
I won't ask any more questions, you just die.
No, it's, it's fine.
You just die.
No, I want you to understand as best you can, but I can't totally explain it because I'm not too sure where the mindset was.
Okay.
Just like if I leave and somebody else comes in, they'll probably say, well, what in the world did he do with this? But I'd tell them to give it a little while and see if it works.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't speak ill of anyone else, but there were some challenges in finding where that stuff was moved to. Anything else before I move off this tiny page? By the way, this is not the budget that we'll ask you to adopt. The one that we're gonna ask you to adopt has three pieces. It had same numbers on maintenance and operation, they just don't change. But you also have to, you also have to approve the debt service and the child nutrition budgets. They're on page three of your budget book. No, not unless you just really need one.
Thank you.
We'll have to have a hearing, but I think it's about three slides. But you have to approve all three of those budgets and we were just concentrating on maintenance and operation because it's certainly the biggest. Change in taxable values, you can see what's happening here. And keep in mind how important this is because the state stays a year behind us. And I'm gonna show you some numbers later that are pretty shocking. But you can see this is going up and that's actually probably more than nine and a half percent, once we see certified. But it was a pretty good jump. Now, what the state's gonna do is they're gonna pick that up and roll it forward with what they think it should be. And if they roll it forward at that level or even much higher, then we're really in trouble and I'll I'll just let you stew on that a minute and then show you what I mean. But it's part of the way the state is putting the burden on you as a taxpayer. Now, this is the same chart that I showed you earlier about projecting the certified values. There's nothing different on this one than it was before, we just included it here. You can see the funding system that's in this general operating budget. Local intermediate's forty-four percent. If you look down at the bottom, last year it was at forty. State funding's at fifty-four, last year it was at fifty-eight. It's almost exactly the numbers that Josh was telling you. That they're changing about four percent a year as your values go up. And federal stayed the same. This is how our budget's broken out. You can see payroll costs are eighty-six and a half percent of it. Sixty-two hundred, which is contracted services, is six point five percent. Four point two percent for supplies, sixty-four hundred, which I don't know why the state chose to call this other expenses. It's fees, dues, travel, any travel for students or adults is two point three. And then capital outlays, a half a percent that comes out of the general budget. Budget by area, I took the instructional areas and then student service areas and combined them just to show you that a huge portion of our budget goes toward students, which it should. But you can see that seventy-seven percent of it's either for instruction, indirect instruction or student services. Extracurricular is only two point eight percent of our entire budget. General administration, which is basically this building, is four point eight. Maintenance is ten point five and all other areas of the budget are four point six percent. So once again, and you should demand this as a board member, that money goes toward instructional and student services. Funds remaining in the bond fund, someone asked about this as we begin to wind down the bond project. In our budget, there's eleven point six million dollars left to finish that Ms. Fields and her group will be working with. That's certainly an estimate. Our investments through April were a little over fifteen million in the debt service fund. We've spent about a million of that since then. So you can see there's probably fourteen million at the end of May. You can see that there's a gap there which would allow you to do some things with bond money that certainly fall within the realm of bonds, but aren't necessarily things that were in the call bond that you will complete. So as you start looking forward, there's gonna be some surplus in the bond fund. And now the not so good part. Looking ahead, this is part of what Josh was talking about. He even had a worse shortfall than I did. It's at least a seven billion dollar shortfall in a state that the sales tax revenues are up over eleven percent. There's a two point five billion dollar shortfall in Medicaid. They keep kicking this from biennium to biennium and don't fund it. There's a lot of money going to Hurricane Harvey relief and if we were one of those school districts, we would be very appreciative of that. They're not gonna charge them for students that aren't there anymore because they still have to get their schools up and operating. So that's the state's concession, which they probably should have. Sales tax diversion to highway fund, I may have mentioned this to you before, but they've capped the amount of money that's raised in sales tax at a given level. So anything above that goes to the highway fund, it can't go to the general fund. So regardless of how much sales tax are raised, the amount that goes in the general fund's capped. And we certainly need the highways fixed, but we also need our kids educated. Deferrals and repayments from last session, this is, they always do this. They skip a month of funding the schools in one biennium and then have to catch it up the next time, which they never do catch up. They're still one behind, but it's a bookkeeping. If you remember the Texas Tomorrow Fund, where you could buy a college education, well, that was great for us, but the state's still losing money on it, so they're still trying to pay that back. Continued TRS care issues, you know that with active care and the TRS care for retirees. Internet Freedom Act is a four hundred and forty million dollar shortfall because they don't tax purchases through the internet. And they're only starting with ninety-four million dollars. That's not counting the Rated A Fund, it's up around twelve billion dollars. And this is the same source that Josh had, Moke and Casey put this information out. Governor Havitz planned, he talked about this, I won't dwell on it. But it does cap revenue and I don't see anything in it that holds us harmless. A lot of times when they do something like this, they'll say, okay, well, we're not gonna let you lose money, which is actually a lie. But they tell you that to start with. It's like when they, if you remember, they added the additional homestead exemption and then they dropped the maximum tax rate from a dollar and a half to a dollar. If you remember, there was an additional state funding for tax relief fund that held us harmless. Well, they did that for three sessions and then they canceled it. We were lucky enough that we were funding ourselves, but a lot of districts lost a tremendous amount of money because of that drop in the tax rate. So even though they hold you harmless, you better watch your back pocket. Josh talked to you about how difficult it would be to pass an election like this. And now we projected these out, Dr. Smith said, well, what would the two and a half percent do to us? This is the taxes and state revenue for eighteen, nineteen that we're projecting, it's a little over a hundred million dollars. If all we had was the two point five percent value increase next year, our total revenue would be less than ninety-seven million dollars. So you're talking about a three point three million dollar decrease. And that's using the nine and a half percent. Once again, without confusing things, the state's value is a year behind us. So as they bring that up, if they show a ten and a half percent increase, then you lose another half a million dollars there. So it's not very pretty. The rest of these, I've just used a different value increase to project out what our revenue might look like next year if the two point five doesn't go into effect. And you can see the only way we get into a positive number is if we get the same value increase that we had this year. And that's the way it'll continue to be. If you ever have a declining year, which if it only went up four point five percent, then we're two and a half million dollars in the hole. And as Josh said, I don't see much relief from the state. There's no, our system's been declared constitutional and they're not gonna be real receptive to any kind of a lawsuit until we're all in the TRE range. And once again, it's on page three. I'll answer any questions, that was a lot of information in a short period of time. We've done the best we can with what we have. And it's sad that you have to look at things. We're fortunate in that we didn't have to propose any cuts to you. And that was because our values went up so high.
Well, let me add just a couple of comments to kind of end our part of the presentation today. I want to thank all of those who helped in preparing for this meeting. And so a lot goes on behind the scenes to get all the data and information lined up. And so with our bond attorney, Mr. Settle, appreciate you and Josh and BOK and the financial team. We certainly appreciate you all as well. One thing I'm sure you noticed and resonated with your board is that I wasn't recommending a raise this year for staff because of all the things that we've just talked about. However, I am very sensitive to our staff, very sensitive to the board's desire to make sure we take care of our staff. And so over the next couple of weeks, as we work our way to the twenty-second, I'll be doing a couple of things. One, I'll be evaluating some options where we can provide a one-time stipend for our staff as we begin the next school year. And then in addition to that, I'll be putting the metrics behind different scenarios where we can adjust our insurance or increase our insurance payments. I think the payment has gone up sixteen dollars, is that fifteen, sixteen dollars? And so we are running some numbers to see what it would cost us to basically take care of that insurance increase for the sixty-one plus percent, right at sixty-two percent of our employees that are on insurance with the district. So I want to let you know that I'm working on that. I feel real confident I can bring a plan that would work for our employees and that the board would be in support of. So we'll be running the numbers and as we work our way to the twenty-second, I'll be keeping in the loop on what that looks like. If there is nothing else, then I'll turn it back over to Madam President.
Okay, do we have any comments from citizens? As a citizen, I'd like to say thank you all for coming today. Today's a very important meeting, very important that we call for the TRE election. And it's very important that it passes. But we'll give out more information as the time comes. But thank you all for being here, answering our questions and listening. Thank you very much. We do not have any communications from the citizens. Being that there are no further items to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.